Detention Center run by SARS, the special robbery sport in Lagos. You must have been hearing about Ed SARS these days. And when people are asking for Ed SARS, I told them, I said, "SARS is not new. We used to go to SARS detention centers." But it was one of the places that I was detained in, in addition to eight other detentions, or several other detentions that I suffered in Nigeria. A lot of torture, and the University of Lagos also, some of you must have heard. I was also attacked in 1994, a day before I was supposed to graduate, by cop gangs put together by the University of Lagos authorities and the Nigerian government at that time. James Dambaba, who used to be Commissioner of Police, was the one who organized that on behalf of Abacha. He also ended up in detention for a long time, because they were the same people who shot Ibu, the former owner of a Ghanaian newspaper. I'm just telling you these stories so that when they ask you about experience, you know that some of us have better experience than the people who are clinging to be leaders today. I have said this several times, that if it comes to experience, the only experience I don't have is the experience of stealing. I don't know how to steal. I don't have experience in assassination. I don't have any experience in stealing bottles of papers, bottles of boxes. I don't have any experiences in engaging or sponsoring robbery people. So Nigeria has been in the state of arduity for so long a time now, that we cannot continue to be the ones who are called upon to fight when things go bad. And when it is time to share the spoils of office, they will tell us that we have sworn allegiance to poverty and as a result, we cannot be a part of it. It's not as if I'm interested in sharing the spoils of office, but I'm interested in fixing the country called Nigeria. And I know, as I'm standing in front of you today, that I'm better qualified, and I mean it, without bragging, that any of the Nigerian leaders that has come throughout the time or have been engaged in this struggle. I mean, I've seen seven presidents come and go. Bosus, Babangida, Tunacon, Abacha, Abu Bakar al Salam, Oluseku Obasanjo the second time, Yaradua, Jonathan, and now Buhari. I'm telling you, all of their brain matter combined together is not up to half of some of you sitting in this room today.
Take it back!
So why should we continue to be led by the dumbest amongst us when we have the sharpest people around the world? Your Chancellor or Vice-Chancellor, we met her today. And when we met her, she said, "Look, Nigeria should consider itself lucky, because some of the best students she's ever seen in South Africa are based here in this school." And, you know, the students from other schools were feeling bad, but they couldn't say anything while we're there. But I told her that it's very sad that the only place that works for a Nigerian is a place outside Nigeria. If you step out of Nigeria today, suddenly your, you know, your light starts to shine. And all of the qualities you thought you never had start to just explode in different directions. You become a star in other places. But the moment you fly, or drive, or swim into Nigeria, your star starts to dim right from the airport. And that is the destiny of Nigeria that we must change right now. There is no reason, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, that Nigeria cannot have a national airport that is better than that of Cape Town. You know, we don't even want to go to Jobo. I traveled yesterday from the international airport, or mischaracterized international airport at Lagos, to this place. Even just putting bulbs that can make you see where you are. You cannot, they can't afford to put bulbs that can light up. I mean, the cheapest bulb, you can just buy it, the ones that don't consume much electricity. It's as if you are walking through darkness, you know, and at every step, somebody wants to extort money from you, or harass you. We got in front of the DSS people, you know, yesterday again, because they have my name on the National Security Watch List. And the moment they saw me, they said, "Please, Mr. Ashore, we know you are going to record us." I said, "Yes, I will." They said, "Look, we are not the ones who put your name there." It's our guys that put it there. I said to them, "You cannot continue to justify doing stupid things or illegal things because your guys sent you to do it. You have to use your brain." Well, because of the recording that I usually do, the man quickly let me pass. And before you knew it, they were taking pictures with us. But it's not all Nigerians that are lucky that way. The airports in Lagos do not have toilets. They installed some about three, four weeks ago. And they had to, as usual, anything they do, they have to launch it, commission it. We went there yesterday, the thing is falling apart already. It's less than a month ago. So I can tell you all the bad stories about Nigeria, but you already know it. Our candidacy is not to repeat what you already know, it's to fix what we know and what we don't know for the future. And it's also to invite all of you, your energy, your intellect, your capacity and your character, to fix your country. Because you are as bad as the leaders who are running your country. The way people take care of, they look at you, the way they judge you is based on the kind of leadership you have in your country. A brother saw me today as we were walking around in Cape Town and said, "You know, he wants you to do something about the way they treat Nigerians outside." And we're laughing. How about doing something about the way they treat Nigerians inside? You guys are lucky, you know. You have somewhere to go that provides you some kind of dignity. In Nigeria, people are locked down in the place. If you are lucky, a young person, you dress nice, you are in a car, police will stop you. It's a crime for a policeman to think that you are prosperous in Nigeria. They call them SARS. You know, they will stop you, they will get you out of the car, and before you know it, you will get shot or killed just because they believe that if you are driving a nice car, you have scammed somebody. That's Nigeria for you. But the real scammers, the real corrupt criminals in Nigeria, the policemen are protecting them. They are carrying bags for their girlfriends. They are helping them to fetch water, they are standing in front of their houses as beggars. They are following their children to go to school. The real criminals, and who are these criminals? They are people within the political class in Nigeria. And they are the same characters that I was talking about who has been carpet-crossing, a carpet-bagging, back and forth in the last two months. But the question we should ask ourselves is this, are we going to continue like this forever?
No, take it back!
So if you don't want to continue like this forever, you have a chance, and you have a choice of a lifetime, and that is to take these guys out of the equation. I say it in a very, very radical way. I'm not apologetic about it, because this might be the last time you hear from me. I don't give a damn. These people, we have to throw a Molotov cocktail at the establishment that is destroying Nigeria. We have to take it out now, we have to take it down, so that we can take our country back from them. What I'm preaching is this, that there has to be a revolution in Nigeria. It's not just a revolution of the mind, it has to be a revolution of the body. We have to take over our streets from those people who have destroyed it for 58 years. We have to take back the country from the people who made refugees in other lands. The people who made Nigerians to be going back to Ghana to be megas and shushena's. So 20 years after Ghanaians came to Nigeria, and they were shushena's and megas. And some of them selling puff puff, as we call it for us, with their Jerry calls in those days, for those of you who are going to know. We are back sending moi-moi to them in Ghana. If the Ghanaian embassy requires visa to go to Ghana, you will find queues in front of the Ghanaian embassy for Nigerians who are dying to go to Ghana. If you are in doubt about it, look at the way they are treating you here in South Africa. To get a visa to come to South Africa is hell. You get to South Africa here, the moment they see a Nigerian, is hell. They did it to us today. The immigration guy that was standing in front was going to print to hotel booking before he can allow, if presented to him that you booked a hotel, he has to go and look into the hotel and print it out before you allow you in. Until one of, he spent an hour and a half of 15 minutes clearing every Nigerian that stood in front of. You could see the contents in his face and contentions, until one of them came to us and said, "Why are you people still standing?" And we said, "Well, your guys are attending to us." No, he asked us, "Are they attending to you?" We said, "No." He then took, because it took him less than two minutes. If the Europeans came, they don't treat them that way. They don't treat the Indians that way. They don't treat the Chinese that way. I'm sure they don't even treat some other lesser countries that way. Whereas Nigeria of 198 million, the so-called giant of Africa, which is a gigantic family in Africa, is treated by every nation, small nations will be kicking Nigeria around like soccer, football. They have no respect for us. For us to regain that respect, we have to fix our home first and foremost. If you don't want South African policemen to be killing Nigerians in South Africa, we have to have a government that is not killing Nigerians at home. Because you are worried about South African police, how about heads men who say to you that the life of a cow is more important than that of a human being? And the president is saying that there's nothing we can do about it. I was told in Kaduna, in Abuja, four days ago. A former Commissioner for Education in Kaduna was killed by kidnappers between Abuja and Kaduna. It's just two hours of road travel. The IG told all the people who wanted to travel down that road that it cannot guarantee their safety. So the only way to now travel for the rich people is to go on the train. So they had to stand in the train. They had to stand in the train, you know, between Abuja and Kaduna. But it's also a matter of time before robbers and kidnappers start attacking the trains. Because the trains move at still speed. They cannot shut that train easily. In fact, I think they shut it until about two months ago. So they are already testing the waters. This might sound bizarre to you, but again, the question I ask to ourselves or ask you is, for how long shall we continue like this? And if we don't want to continue like this, it is incumbent upon you and me to rise up and do what is right, not only by our nation, but by our conscience. There are people who have said that maybe Nigeria breaks up, Nigeria is going to be a better place. I laugh at them, it's Wahidi. If Nigeria breaks up today, Nigeria has, every portion of Nigeria that has broken up inherits its own teeth. So you think that if there's Odua Republic, Bolat Nubu will suddenly leave you alone? I said, "Okay, well, I'll enjoy it." You know, if there is a midwestern state, James Ibori is still there, you understand? Or if you go to Liva, so you have a South Subs, there will be a Uke there, Ruti Me Amechi there. You know, if you go to the north, you'll find a Tambua there, Babangida is there. If you go to the mid, you know, the north central, eh, you have the Kharati there, Saraki. So everybody who does relocate from Abuja, the oppression will continue until we develop citizens who can resist. And if we resist these people, Nigeria will attract not only great Nigerians, it will attract the best of the world. Because trust me, Nigerians are great people. I have no doubt about it. You have demonstrated your greatness all over the world. Our doctors are doing impossible things. Our lawyers are doing great things. Our accountants are doing their best. Even our pastors are known to be some of the best scammers in the world. No, I'm not trying to offend them. I'm not saying that we, everything we lay our hands on, we do it very well. Like Vice-Chancellor said, you know, she mentioned something, she used the word crime. She said, "Nigerians are very good, whatever they do, even crime, they do very well." But on a serious note, we just, you know, I want to come here and maybe, you know, try to teach you what you already know, the easiest way to solve a problem, you know, public ethics, accountability, all those things. But the truth is that that is not our problem. Our problem is just a very miniscule percentage of criminals that have been holding us to ransom. And when a generation of them is done, they will hand us over to their children, or their courtesies, or friends. And we're just there, just looking and doing nothing about it. And the few people that try to do something about it, we laugh at them, we scorn at them. We have no respect for them. Sometimes when you look at even comments made by young people, if a people have done something for Nigeria, you weep. You know, people who have never done a thing before will be insulting someone like Wale Shreka. They will insult Chinua Achebe. They will insult Garnifal and Mefemi Fafal. Anybody that stood for Nigeria, people, they insult them. But the criminals, if you need to see, they have army of supporters. You go to Facebook or Twitter today or Instagram, you know, they will tell you that Saraki is not the only thief now. Yeah, so go and find the other thief you already have. They will tell you, "And, you know, let Buhari finish another four years, ten years now." Say, "Maybe your region just finished, you say, 'Go back to Njoditi Zone.'" But this is the same Buhari that have a package for another 10 days to go to London. And this is how they are packaging him, or they somehow use him to win the election. And at that time, they were decided to kill him, or they turn him permanently back to London. The reason why they are using Buhari to do this is because they know that they can fool us whenever they can. And I tell you, these politicians are always looking out of the window thinking, "When are these Nigerians going to react? When is it that they are going to shut down this, our business of extortion and destruction and decimation?" And they wait and wait forever, and nobody does anything about it. They get more and more emboldened. That is what we are determined to stop this time around. And that is why I and others decided to form the organization you know as Take It Back. And within a short time, it's been encouraging, that it became a global phenomenon. All across the world, everybody shouting, "Take it back!" And we have been able to go around Nigeria, running up our six regional tour of Nigeria, town hall meetings, engagements in Chokoto a few days ago. And immediately we finished, we decided that it's time to go to South Africa because we know the spirit of South Africans, I mean Nigeria's base in South Africa are so strong that it will be a great addition to this struggle to flush these elements out of our political system in Nigeria. That's why we are here today. And we are not going to stop. We won't be tired until these people are completely removed from our system, until we flush out all these characters who have made it impossible for us to realize our potential as a nation, or as individuals, or collectively. Because every time we try to move forward, they put us in reverse gear. And the next set of Gear Four, Reverse Gear Movement, is restoring Buhari, who they accepted as failed completely. Who could not set up a cabinet six months after he was elected the last time. Who out of three years has clearly spent almost a year out of Nigeria fixing whatever is wrong with him with Nigeria's wealth and resources. Who has used members of his family and created a kaba to drag Nigeria back. Those wicked people. I don't know how more wicked you can be against yourselves. I'm saying that what is best for Nigeria in 2019 is a man in an analog state of atrophy. That is where they want to return Nigeria to. And that's what we are saying no to in organizing ourselves the way we are doing today. We have several other events lined up, but this is the only night we will be here in Cape Town. And I am here not to be, you know, too cocky about what to say to you. You know, I don't want to make a presentation that will make you bored. I'm a professor to teach post-colonial Africa history for eight years in New York. And I don't always laugh. I don't always laugh to teach all the time. Sometimes I just want to vent. And this is what I came here to do tonight. And I hope that somehow I'm able to get you angry enough to think about doing something about Nigeria. For those of you who want to come home, you want to call your families, for those of you who want to organize virtually or directly, you have a chance to do it now. Don't come back next year and say that you didn't have an alternative. There is clear alternative in the horizon. A few days ago, we met with other younger presidential aspirants in Abuja, Mogalu, Fela Droto, and several other young people. And my chat to them is that, you know, look, a coalition inside this room is not going to make these people go away. You have to own the streets. If you don't own the street, forget about it. It is what the young people here did in EFF, led by Julius Malerba. They took over the streets. They were part of every struggle that was there, you know. When they, when they did the killing in Makarena, was the place where they killed the workers. Marikan. They were there. When the students were fighting over school fees, they were there. You know, any form of injustice in the land, they are struggling against it. That is the way to take and own the street back. Not by saying that, "Well, we are forming a united front." What does that mean? But we form another coalition. There are probably another five million coalitions in Nigeria. It doesn't mean anything. But as there's some grassroots engagement. Grassroots engagement politically in Nigeria means how much money you have to spread through the market women, and taxi drivers, and the trade driver unions, and Okada drivers. It's not grassroots engagement, it's grassroots manipulation. So we want to have something that is real. We don't have money, I'm not going to lie to you, but money is going to be a currency that must fail within the Nigerian political system. Ideas will become, you know. The amount of ideas we have. Our ideas are stated clearly in our own agenda, known as PISA Heat, where we will take security to a new level in Nigeria. We will take, you know, power, which is electricity. Without electricity, forget about it. You, we were flying into Cape Town today, and we saw windmills. Joshua drew my attention to it. He said, "They're probably just powering a whole village." We drove past a shack, the thing we call a jiggle in Nigeria, today. And we discovered that in Cape Town here, they are building houses with solar power on rooftops to power those houses for poor people. That is the way countries develop. But in Nigeria, they are looking for how to destroy the shacks and give it to ShopRide, which is a South African company. That is after MTN is done with you at night, ShopRide is waiting for you during the day time. Infrastructure, these are the kind of things you want to have, not the kind of train that is moving between Kaduna and Abuja. But fast trains, and South Africa has taught us. South Africa is supposed to be our junior brother when it comes to how to run things. But look at what they did in Watkopp came here. When I came here a few years ago, from the airport, I think God said they had this train, it's better than what you can find in New York. That is how countries progress. The same time, South Africa was achieving this feat, Nigeria and the people who said they were doing oil subsidy had just delivered 26 billion dollars. That same amount of money could have done the kind of wonders we are talking about. You have corruption, you know what it is doing to us. The more corrupt you are in Nigeria, the more popular you are, the more likely you are going to win election. There was a politician at the time that I wrote a story about when I was still at Sahar Reporters. He said to me, "Thank you so much for the story you did on me. And thank ESSC for arresting me, because now my people want me to go to the Senate." That's how Nigeria is, you know. We have scars to our economy, and the restructuring that needs to happen in Nigeria. I am not part of those people who is throwing around the buzzword restructuring. It's a buzzword for people who are looking for more money, or who have lost out of the sharing formula of the national cake. Our restructuring is a type that is about us. And I have said it very clearly, if you are not in power in Nigeria, you cannot restructure Nigeria for yourself. The young people of Nigeria, for whom a restructured future is about, must first of all be in the position of authority. You must fight to be elected. Because if Buhari is restructuring Nigeria today, they will not invite you there. It's going to be the kaba that will be invited there, their own people, that are already destroying the system. We have healthcare plans, education. Look, there's no reason why our universities are not like this. You are not likely to find a hall like this in any university in Nigeria. I'm not trying to say something bad. You can't find a hall like this at the University of Lagos that is clean like this. The door is walking, you have two projectors hanging down, there's no camera there, air conditioning is working. You have Wi-Fi? Wow! We should send this back here. Yes. So I've just been told that we don't have time. Sometimes we have so much to say, there is no time. Sometimes we have much time, and there's not a lot to say. And that's what we are going to do. Because we want you to ask questions. And don't forget, we are heading back to Jobo tonight. Unfortunately, my agenda is to miss the flight, so that I can stay here tonight. So please, thank you so much for coming. I see that more people have arrived. We'll take your questions. It would have been great if all of us actually sat closer to the front, so that we can engage more. But I don't want to sit you from wherever you may be. So we'll take questions, and I'll try my best to answer them, so that, because our handlers want to rush us, I mean, rush us out of this space so that we can return back to Jobo tonight. But we'll still be in South Africa until Tuesday. A bunch of events lined up, and town hall meetings are happening. So if you can find a way to Jobo, it's just two hours flight from here. We'll continue from there. Thank you so much for coming.
And when we say "take it back," you say "show them the way." Take it back! Show them the way! Take it back! Take it back! Show them the way!
Thank you so much. Thank you guys so much for listening to Shor's speech. We're not going to waste much time. We're going to take questions and recommendations. But please, raise your hands if you're interested, so we can move forward. Any ladies want to ask something, please? I'm going to start, please. I'm going to take five questions at a time. We don't have much time, so please, we might not be able to reach out to everyone, so please, just be able to be if I can outreach you. If you want to talk, please, now, please come. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you very much for doing this, I appreciate it.
My name is Alauw Fady, a PhD student at the West Free Department here. It's a pleasure to meet you, sir. I've been watching your videos on YouTube, where you went to Kano, Kaduna, and Vax. I want to ask you, what do you want to do about the security situation in Nigeria? And about all these old kind of politicians that are corrupt? Because if you eventually do well, these guys will be able to frustrate you one way or another. So what's your plan for there? And how do you intend to contain them from disrupting things? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ibukun. Now, my question is, or recommendation is very simple. You've presented typically what every politician presents when we go for campaign. Many, they want to do a lot of things, you understand, in a very short term. And my concern is, how do you do short things within a limited time of four, eight years, with limited resources? So like I said, it's more like a recommendation. Now, out of these things that you've listed, what is the priority for Nigeria? That's my question, because I know for sure that you cannot do all these things in four, in eight years. So what is the priority for you? Thank you.
Okay, my name is Zainab. I'm studying philosophy, politics, and economics. So like, in the spirit of the women's month, I would just like to ask, what is the, like, policy, um, plan for, like, tackling, like, issues of, like, targeted towards gender-based violence? Because we know it's, like, really, really, um, important, and it's prevalent in a country like Nigeria, that most things happen in the rural areas where the government, you know, get contacted. So like, what's the plan for the bottom-up approach of development towards gender-based violence?
Yeah, good day. My name is Bayo De Guanalo. I'm in the Electrical Engineering Department in U City. So I'm here to ask a question, like, I have like two questions. So the thing is, your base is largely made of elites, you know. How do you plan to expand to cover the poor people? Those who sell their votes for like 4,000 bucks and a bag of rice? So how do you plan to expand your base? So I'm just like thinking, you know, because most of them need economic opportunities. So how do you plan to do this, a kind of economic opportunities that will help? So how do you plan to do this, uh, kind of economic, uh, opportunities that will help them, you know? And second one is, uh, the country is like, uh, being sold, you know, because of, uh, we are in debt to like IMF or World Bank and the likes to the West. So how do you plan to end this, uh, perpetual debt, you know, uh, like it's ruining the country? Like eighty percent of our revenue is actually going to set this debt. How do you want to end this, this, this exhausting system?
Thank you for your speech. Uh, my name is Samor and I'm a PhD student here. Uh, one of the things you mentioned, uh, also pertains to Nigerians that are already doing very well abroad. And the question I want, as I want to go directly to it, is how are you going to make sure that we no longer have brain drain in Nigeria? Because that's a very big problem. Like, if you have all the infrastructure over here, there is tendency that you want to stay. But how do you make sure that all those people, the great Nigerians that you've mentioned abroad, that are everywhere, from your experience, also come back home? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Abiella Babatunde. I'm a PhD student at School of Economics here and a lecturer at C P U T. I want, I have one recommendation for you and I want, uh, just, I want to ask, how, how are you going to? The recommendation is, how is you, because there is poverty in the land. How are you going to do something that what happened in Kiti by A P C winning election through money or P D P would not want to happen in two thousand and nineteen? And lastly, as a young Obama, please, I want to frustrate people. I'm doing, I'm doing this for you because of your courage. I'm a comrade. I finished from University of Lagos. I don't want to, you know, profess anything in Nigeria. This, this guy's name is Dan, why? Name is Dan for his life, Dan for the hunger. Please, we have to appreciate you.
My name is Gia from Stellenbush University. First of all, I want to appreciate your courage. I want to study your courage. Then secondly, what's the plan to infiltrate the House of Representatives senate? Because it's not enough to have two intentions, but you need to have people who can, who believe in your vision and the values that are within the House of Representatives senate.
My name is Maria Yakubu. I'm a PhD student in Biological Sciences Department. And, um, I have a recommendation and a question tied, you know, to the same question. The first question is, what, I think the most urgent need that we have in Nigeria is power. And I do believe that if you can do something about power, I believe that that will take care of all the problems because there are a lot of attendant problems that are tied to this. And then secondly, I feel that an urgent need that we have is to educate people at the grassroots, the common man on the street. And these people pretend a great danger to us in the sense that however overwhelming you are, but these people do not understand anything other than stomach infrastructure. And for, you know, for a little sum of money, they're gonna sell out. So I believe that your presidency should, uh, address the education of people at the grassroots.
Thank you once again. Uh, my name is Jafaru. I'm PhD Chemical Engineering. One question I have for you is that we come from places where we have to see what you've done before, before coming here. You mentioned a lot of things about what you did, why you were in Unilag, doing all those stuffs. But we are more practical. What human interior projects have you done currently that you think as in can attract people that are practical enough for us to vote for you? Thank you.
My name is Matif. PhD. Could you tell, uh, tell us the lesson between you and Tenu? Thank you. The what? The lesson between you and Tenu? Do you think, uh, so let me know.
Uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, my name is Ahmed Olusegunammas. And I'm, I'm here from there, right? My question is very private. I want to ask a direct question.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Can you please come out?
Um.
Please, can you come to the front if you're just coming? We want to feel the sense in front.
Mister President, you waiting? Uh, I want to ask you, what is the benefit of being in Nigeria? According to yours, your travels and experiences, exposure, in your understanding, what is the benefit of being in Nigeria? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, the President of Woting. I'm Abi Sola from Stellenbush University. I will say my, um, recommendation and then a question. The recommendation is that you have actually caught the attention of the Nigerian youth, those home, what atom man has products. And then we need to, I think you need to put into consideration the senior citizens. And what I mean by the senior citizens is that those, the pensioners, the gratitude, those of gratitude and support. And not from what, from where, from the fact of the country I am from, either that ones. Very much because of their mass, their, their experience, which is very, very, which is negative. I would advise that you have, you, as you go on a campaign trail, put them into consideration. Secondly, I, I've seen your PowerPoint where you, this is, you pull, you, you showed off something about the, the link between the industry which is very, very, I think that is where my guys come to use and develop. I would also like to ask you this question. The egg sector is a desire back in the ground. Professionalism that makes the egg circles living not a good path. So what are your plans to fix this place?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mister, I'm sorry. Thank you again for coming here to share your plans for the future of Nigeria. I just have one recommendation, just one. Out of all the agendas you have here, if you can just focus on power, just find source and shit on what she talked about. It has like a ripple effect on the social economy, agricultural, education, even security. Because with power, more jobs and in turn to reduce, um, the rate of people that are going to crime, just because of power. And that will make Nigeria better.
Thank you. Just to give this, um, brother of mine one minute, he just came all the way from Stellenbush to speak, please. Thank you.
Okay. I, uh, it's not me alone. We, uh, very many here, we're just coming in from Stellenbush University. And we knew that we are, uh, uh, we have missed the note in all that you have presented here. But I would just want to create an audience. Please, can you just allow two questions for my people from Stellenbush University? Thank you.
Thirty seconds per question. His flight leaving in the next forty-five minutes. Please, please consider. So who are the guys from Stellenbush, please?
Yes, yes. Mister Shor, I'm glad to meet you. I hope you're doing. I think one of the problems in Nigeria is corruption. And I really want to know how you want to go about it. Even if we can fight corruption, I believe we will be able to get it.
Uh, congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. For awakening the Nigerian youth, I just want to advise you. Okay. My name is, uh, Ainde Mohamedusmane from Koran State, Nigeria. So, that's why I'm congratulating you for awakening us. But, uh, I want to recommend, because I wouldn't, I have a lot to tell you before, because of time. I just want to recommend, sir, that for everything you want to do, you have to, I don't know if you have it anyway. I know when you came to Ilon, I was around, but you should look at the way the policies and the election patterns do go in Nigeria. I can tell you, man, of the youth, the problem we have is that when you interact, they don't have PVC. That is the truth. But there are some people that have the PVC and they are ready. So these are the people that we actually need to orientate so that they will buy into our idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Five minutes for us, or we're good?
Yes. Thank you so much. I, this, I promise not to talk on a trail. Thank you. I mean, it's amazing. Most of you guys are PhD holders, better qualified than I am. And this is why I keep saying, there is no reason whatsoever why Nigeria should consider to be in the hands of its dumbest people, where we have the sharpest human beings around the world. And you have asked great questions. And the first question was about security. Uh, I have said it, that the problem with security in Nigeria today is that we don't have a commander-in-chief of the armed forces who is competent and has capacity to run the country. I was one of the people who exposed the chief of army staff at the beginning of the Muhari regime's, uh, uh, when it started, as having bought houses in Dubai. The man is still there. What do you expect him to do? He will expect the war to continue. When they talk about Boko Haram, you know why Boko Haram is still frustrating? Because the general don't want the war to end. Simple. It is the way they are making billions right now. And when Muhari came, you saw how former army generals, all the chief of staffs in the army, navy, and air force, they found millions of dollars, some of them in the tank above their house, sewage under the ground, under the bed, under cooking pots, inside the pillows. There were monies at the store because they perpetuated the war in Boko Haram. The moment we have a commander-in-chief who is competent, who is able to give direction, change commanders whenever, equip and train for battle in Nigerian armed forces, and most importantly, use technology the way it should be used. Who did pick these guys? I have said it, that there are things that a hundred thousand Naira drones can do in modern-day warfare that five thousand soldiers may not be able to do if they are not properly equipped. But where are we? Nobody's taking along this line. The last time we ever commissioned anything, as we usually do, Muhari would have commissioned the same drone that Jonathan commissioned five years before, that has never flown before. That tells you the animal of nature of our leadership in the country. Whereas technology has supported us opportunity to do a lot of business. When Muhari first came and he was using what they call body language, he went to our airport, customs were no longer asking for bread. Everybody was behaving. The moment they discovered that the body language was fake, they came back ferociously. I remember two months after Muhari came to power, there was no single police checkpoint on my way from Lagos to my hometown, you know, in those days. I came back three months later. I found over twenty checkpoints. Not only do we have police checkpoints, you have constant checkpoints, you have immigration checkpoints inside Nigeria. You, I'm not lying. Then I found on the way N D L A checkpoints inside of Nigeria. It's because everybody sees Nigerian person as somebody to be extorted and oppressed. When you don't have a commander-in-chief that is capable, you cannot fight any security problem. But let me tell you, when they want to fight for something that is their own interest, thirty thousand policemen suddenly show up in Kiti to help them win the election. If only we can send five thousand policemen to go to Zafara, they will end the killings in Zafara immediately. Because those guys who are killing in Zafara, some of them are using cordials, cutlasses, and even croods, nameplates. Our policemen are just still have AK-47. And no matter what you say about Nigerian police, people are still at this generally afraid of the presence of police. We just came from Zafara. We didn't see one single police checkpoint in those areas. A subway is convenient and profitable. There will never be checkpoint. Nobody's protecting them. So we need to have long-term, you know, medium-term and short-term solution to our security problem. There's no big deal about security. You and I knew about it, that South Africa is probably the home of insecurity. There was a time it was really bad, but look at where we are today. South Africa at least is doing better than Nigeria.
More to be.
Well, right? But Nigeria is just sliding deeper, deeper into oblivion. Second question, you say, how do you frustrate those who might want to curtail your thoughts? Well, I have an advice not to give away too much. But one thing I can tell you, and I think this will answer the question about how to fight corruption. Single-handedly, I have in addition to, in support of, in collaboration with a lot of Nigerians through Sahar Reporters in the last twelve years that I, I founded some twelve years since, we've done a lot of fighting against corruption in Nigeria. And you can imagine what I would do because I know where the monies travel through. I know how they deal with Nigerians when it comes to corruption. There's nobody who knows better than I do. And to answer one of the questions that somebody asked, I, what humanitarian job have I done for Nigeria? I have no foundation in Nigeria that can give money to people that the government is supposed to be taking care of because I don't have money. It's actually not the job of citizens to be doing humanitarian jobs. It's the job of government to do social, to provide social security for all. But I'll give you one small, single example that happens in my lifetime that you may not forget too quickly. There used to be a woman known as Stella Odua, now in the city. She bought two BMWs, inflated price. We exposed that corruption known as Odua Gates. It led to all kinds of inquiries. There's inquiry in the senate. It's probably the most single story that led to the most outrage within Nigeria. I don't know, maybe because of BMW, you know, people are jealous of her. I don't know and I don't care. But do you believe that since Stella Odua was removed as Minister of Aviation, there has not been a sin, there has not been any major aircraft in Nigeria? This was two thousand and thirteen. I did this story. If she hadn't been, that story hadn't shaken the aviation sector. I told some of the people who are saying, "You haven't done anything for Nigeria," maybe you would have died in an aircraft by now. And I'm not bragging about, it's not simply I have the technical know-how. But there are certain things we do that is even sometimes more than humanitarian if you have conscience and you can object to what is wrong in your own society. Being a humanitarian well-giver is not the same thing as being a Robin Hood person who steals from the poor. I mean, you know, they steal from the poor. And then they make themselves rich and give it back to the poor. An example is, uh, Koran State, where Saraki gives rice during Salah. They are going to do it this next Salah again. Yes, they will do it in this Salah in Dougal because it's busy now. But guess what? People see him as an humanitarian giver. Have you ever researched that just in one day in front of his house, over a hundred women were trampled to death? Any guys ever heard about it?
Yeah, sure.
It's, oh, it's actually, we, you know, it on Wikipedia, it is noted as one of the biggest single tragedy that ever happened anywhere in the world, one of it. But people don't remember that. But if you go to Ilon today, they'll say that he's a savior. Nobody even investigated how many people died. The media was even complicit in covering up this particular, so that there was no body count. And because this, most people who died on that, they were poor and Muslims, they were buried the same day. So that's the kind of humanitarian service that our politicians are providing. They will steal from the poor and give back to the poor. And we start saying, "Oh, he's a philanthropist." When we talk, want to call him, you say, "His chief doctor," you know, and all of that jargon that they put after their names in Nigeria. Zenam, you asked about gender-based violence. It's very, very important, especially from the angle you asked. How do we go all the way to the villages where this is happening? And I think this is where also technology can be of help if government is interested. That we can track where the gender violence is happening. If everybody who is witnessing it or who has been a victim can have a place to which they can report. And government can also respond by ensuring that if anybody is in danger, something special is done. Even if we miss flying an helicopter to get a person out of the place that we do it. Because we do it for the rich people. When they have accidents on the highway, we get them flown, not only to the airport, but we fly them out of the country to go and get treatment. But this has to be systematic, has to be that the government or the country recognizes that it's a big problem. And I recognize that because I come from a village, very, very deep village when I was growing up in those days. And I've seen so many of these things happen. But I guarantee you is that with the knowledge of what we know and what we have and what's... But I guarantee you is that with the knowledge of what we know and what we have and what the penetration that internet has had and even mobile telephone has done in the country, we can do that. And with the empowerment of our police to be conscious to this kind of violence and to protect and see people who are victims of this kind of violence, a special population of persons that must be attended to, uh, specially, providing special prosecutors that will prosecute people who engage in these things differently from the who handle other types of crimes. It will make, bring about immediate change. Bayode, you said, how do we prevent people from selling their votes? I'll tell you something, don't let us underestimate Nigerians. The same people that are selling their votes now are also the same people who don't used to sell their votes, some of them in the eighties. You know that there are families that you come from that used to vote for Awolowo, whether he won election or not. Because Awolowo has got some valuable offerings for them. Their children will go to school, they provided healthcare to them. And they did all kinds of things to show that they are able to lift them out of poverty. I am a beneficiary of free education in the southwestern part of Nigeria. If Awolowo didn't bring a secondary school to my village, in 1980, I'll probably be a Hawaiian tapper today. It's a possibility, you know? But that singular act led to the education of three hundred persons in my village. Instead of the six people that used to be admitted to go to secondary school from another town after they do what they call entrance exams. We didn't have to do any entrance exams. They just bought the college etcetera as a new secondary school. And all of us stopped when we just went to the place, we signed our forms, we became students, we got teachers, we got books, we got literature books, we got erasers. I joke about it that we got so many erasers, when my cousin go home, she, she thought it was food, she ate up the eraser. Serious. So that is the kind of thing that people do these days that make them understand. The question we should ask ourselves is, are politicians actually selling ideas anymore? No, because when you see them, they just do what they call rallies. Everybody come around, they shout, they throw money at everybody, they stamp it after it, they throw rice at them and then they throw a few Naira and bread and they disappear. If they win election, before you know it, somebody who used to drive one jalopy used vehicle before, is driving fifty Prado Jeeps. They are surrounded by policemen, the people who voted for them can't even go near them, they know. All in Kitay where they turned out the ramp and the clown heard the, the state to ransom, and audaciously proclaimed what he called stomach infrastructure. He then built their schools, they built their bridges, he just kind of mixed their destiny together and gave them to eat, you know? And then everybody was following him around until the veteran stomach infrastructure practitioners, which are just criminals in APC, came around and dislodged him. And that's why you see a lot of people, the outrage that would have happened in Kitay would have been different if it wasn't Fajoshé that was the victim of it. But people just saw it, it's like, okay, Fajoshé himself came through into office the same way in 2014. You guys are not forgetting about, are forgetting about the Kitay gate, which we broke on Sahar reporters, uh, in those days. And I'm being one that there's not much time, but I will try the best I can to just rush through.